Okay, it's Wednesday, October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We're to start the Town of Sangerville Select Board meeting. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jody's not going to be attending today. So it's just Dale and I and Patrick, and we got some gentlemen from the fire department. Approval of the minutes, Select Board meeting nine, twenty, twenty-three.
Make a motion for A.
Second, we will vote in favor. Item three, review of treasurer's warrants, payroll eighty-one and eighty-five, accounts payable eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-six.
Make a motion for A and B is read.
Second, both vote. Uh, open session. We're all family here, I just guess. Full business, town hall building.
So last week we had our first workshop, uh, and it went extremely well.
I got some good feedback.
A lot of positive.
Yep.
Uh, not one, not everybody had the same view, the same opinion. Um, so we did task out some items to do some research on, you know, environmental impact studies, uh, on purchases, what it would take to do repairs. So different things we're all looking at so we can compile all this information and give back. The engineers come in Friday to talk with us and take a walk through there. Uh, this is part of the new town hall also. They go up to the, um, Public Works Building to discuss what need to do if we, if we can, or if we want to, or if we can move into there as the town office as a backup. So, uh, with that, we, I mean, we gotta, I feel like we gotta have a little more time to put some of this information together to present to the town hall before we have a special meeting for vote.
Uh, well, the, the due proposal, I'm not sure what we're lacking there.
Well, some of it, we gotta make sure that if we're gonna use federal funds, where we stand with environmental impact studies and where that, that fits in building up here or where we might build. Also, I did go to, uh, Dan Starburg, we walked through the Catholic Church last Friday 'cause he's selling that, and he's got it listed for a hundred and ninety thousand, but he told me he would do much better than that for the Town of Sangerville if we wanted that as a town office option. So there's another option that we need to go down to the rabbit hole to find out so we can present that to.
So why would we, why do we need to worry about an environmental impact study until after we even get in the running for federal money?
Well, that's, so that's part of it.
You know what I mean? Because you don't need to do that until you get there.
Right.
So it's not a, it's not a delay, you know what I mean? You don't have to do that before you get to that point. I just, if you think we're gonna be able to get funding, then...
Jody's, and I, I'm speaking from recollection, I may not get this exactly right, but when she spoke to the representative at Collins Office, I was left with the impression that there's, there's money that's scheduled for early next year that is only available for projects that have been approved on the local level. Doesn't mean we'll get it, but we don't even have an opportunity to seek it unless we've approved it.
Right.
And it was from a bucket that isn't utilized much. We kind of fit in a niche because of the size of our community and what we would be doing with it. So the sequencing of this, we, we kind of pushed this ahead because we wanted to get access to that bucket of money as early in twenty-four as we possibly could.
That bucket of money is gone because now they're gonna be starting to work on for twenty-five.
I'm wondering if it's the same bucket of money that she was talking about.
Cause that was just, it wasn't that long ago.
She just spoke to this woman like sixty days ago.
When I talked to her two weeks ago, she said that they're already appropriating all the funds for twenty-four and going through the list to approve, and by March they'll start appro, uh, going through the, the, uh, acceptance by the end of...
There was a term, was it regional? I don't remember the name of the tranche of money, but Jody wouldn't, I get, I, but the, the thought process was, if, if that's correct, was basically, we, we, we'd want a chance at that money.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it doesn't, we don't know whether we'd get it. If we did get it, and then, and on top of that, because we were awarded the money, and we were told we had to do an environmental impact study, then we would do it.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're never gonna tell us that we have to do it until they tell us we have the money. Is that fair to look at it that way?
Yeah, it is. It, so I'll, I'll have to dig into it because I also, uh, met with the Maine Development Center Foundation today, and we were talking, and this is, is part of the old building. She told me today, uh, that money for brick and mortar historical buildings is limited. It's difficult to get money.
That was, we've already been down this road, yeah.
That's just a whole nother thing that is gonna have to come out of this workshop that the, the, the concept that there's historical grant money out there for all these buildings is not there anymore.
Well, it is, but the problem is it's not available as a municipality.
Right, that's right.
That's why, I mean, we've said this a zillion times.
Because...
If a nonprofit wanted to take over that building, there is all kinds of historicals as a nonprofit.
Uh, Van Beern is in the same boat we are, and they just disposition their municipal building to build a new one to meet the needs of not having seven thousand square feet for three people.
It's no different than Dover to the same thing.
Right, so the nonprofit of the building...
But the back, those are two separate issues. I think you're absolutely right about that. But if, if there is a bucket of money.
Yeah.
If Jody's impression was accurate, that's the motivation for trying to get this thing going. If there isn't a bucket of money, it really doesn't need to, we don't need the special, so...
So on top of all that, and it's in, in, you know, the town manager's stuff, but we'll talk about it now, that's what, one of the meetings Friday with the engineer is to go up here and discuss, can we even have the town office in the building as it stands right now? So I'm gonna start going into investigating, can, and doing the analysis. Can we just clean up what's there for administrative space? You know, it's already heated into the one big bay. What does it, what will it take and what will the insurance say? So I've already talked to the insurance company on change of purpose for that building, and they're gonna help guide us through, or me through what, what we can and can't do and what that looks like. Because even at this point, that would be a small win for us to be, have an office in there at this point now. If we do go forward and we can build and we do get the money to build, then we just would have to come up with an alternative, you know, maybe it's a mobile trailer for
Yeah, some temporary.
the time it is built, you know? So that's, that's where I'm headed and that's how I'm driving that. We have the space that, you know, there's other things that we know happened this week with tenants in the building.
Sure.
And I can't have taxpayers coming into a building that smells like that, you know? And just, and they're complaining about it when they come in, and it's not. So I really wanna try this week to look at getting in, in working something out up there.
That's, it sounds like the dovetails, I don't, it makes total sense to me.
Okay. Uh, move on?
Yeah, uh, item six, new business.
So the last, uh, meeting when we had, uh, uh, thirty, forty people here, actually, let me do, uh, Blaine first and then I'll move back to Al A. Can we do that?
Yes, yeah.
You wanna do that? Take care of Blaine?
Absolutely.
Blaine's appointment for planning board, uh, signature, and then we'll get you taken care of in the evening over the week sworn in by, uh, the town clerk. Can we do that?
Yes, oh yeah.
The big signature.
It'll be the last time, it's fine. Good, rock and roll. What's it take?
Their signature.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to move to executive session.
Okay. Uh, Dale's made a motion to go into executive session under one M R S A four oh five A. This will be regarding Blaine Newt. It's four oh nine, and we're now in executive session. All right, it's, uh, four thirteen, I make a motion that we come back into session.
Second.
Uh, no action taken on the executive session. We're going to, uh, move ahead with the appointment of Blaine Newt to the planning board effective... Well, when you, you're gonna swear in later in the week.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this.
Actually, Blaine Newt, probably go down there.
Wow.
This might be there now.
I'll find out, not gonna go on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Very good, um, there it is.
I don't need nothing, anything there.
You're, you're all set. Thanks for coming.
Keep on.
All right.
It is October.
Uh, Patrick, uh, A, town managers' applications.
So taxpayers, uh, in the, in the big meeting last week, uh, had asked if there had been any other, um, applicants besides myself, and we know there was one after me. And I would not have done this, but it was on record and I wanted to make sure that it was clear that there was and was not anybody before me. Uh, going through the town manager email box, uh, there was on the, on June twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-three, an applicant that had, uh, submitted, uh, her resume, references, and cover letter as an application to the town manager of Sangerville. And this, so that would have been well over a month or two before me and three weeks after the interim was appointed. And going through the resume, that individual is more qualified than myself, uh, to the point where she and I both academically are identical. She had been a previous interim town manager and assistant town manager. Uh, I did go ahead and contact MMA Legal to just make sure that everything was, you know, there was no violation of anything, cause, uh, going through the email box, that resume and cover letter references was never forwarded to the, um, town select board. And I know that because going through the sent box, you can see where mine and the one after me were sent, but none before me. But they're the, in the inbox before me. So then I called the individual and asked her if she had heard anything, and she said, no. But she was all set, she had a great job, and, you know, things happened, so... And I never would have brought this up if I hadn't have been on record and somebody had asked last meeting.
Sure.
But I went and did my investigation and due diligence that, hey, was there ever anything else in there? Was, and the individual was actually more qualified than myself.
Well, like you said, we were never made aware of it.
Town, town clerk? We have an interim, Michelle Nichols, uh, she started this past week. Uh, she did have to give her employer two weeks' notice, so she's been coming in, uh, at night helping, and it goes into some of the stuff below, but she's been working on the quarterly and, uh, monthly taxes, they're all done, she did them, she's been teaching the deputy, so, uh...
She has experience.
She's got thirty years' experience. Uh, she came from Guilford, and then she's also over at, uh, where's it, Kingsbury?
Yeah, I'll tell them.
And so she's, she's, uh, fitting in, uh, we're gonna announce the permanent vacancy in another week, uh, to the public so that everybody has a fair chance. And I did discuss, and she knows this is interim, she has to apply just like everyone else. Good. Uh, next workshop for town office is the sixteenth of October sixth, same, same place. We have a, we have a really good team, like I said before, uh, so I don't believe that. Uh, we talked about special town meeting already, um, we just need to get it on the docket some, sometime before January.
Clarification from Jody, and that's, that's really gonna drive that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, also, uh, we got emails for, from the solar company, uh, discussing some of the decommissioning of our ordinance. I'm just providing that information to the town council, and we'll just go with, with guidance from legal on that matter because that doesn't really apply to us besides legal, correct?
Yeah, I, 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 I'll let Jody read this too, but, um...
Yeah.
I'm inclined not to spend...
Any funds on it.
Any funds on... He's making a, the, the nature of the request i- is such that he, they would still have to sign our ordinance.
Right.
Uh, so I don't, it's very, it's kind of disjointed, so, anyway.
My reports, um, like I said, Michelle's been, her and Sam have gotten the nine forty-ones all done for the quarter and the month, so, uh, as far as big rocks that were indicated before that we're gonna miss certain suspenses, we have not, we're, we're actually, we're good, we're fine. They, the warrant's been signed and they've been paid, so we're good with that. Uh, we talked about Public Works Building and meeting the engineer on Friday. Uh, steering committees, uh, I'm gonna put, the rec committee is starting, um, next week on the eleventh, we're putting the recreation committee back together. We have, uh, a lot of phone calls for people that wanna be involved in discussing the parks.
Okay, so are you having a parks committee or a recs committee?
Parks, it, it's gonna be the parks committee, what it was before. Yeah, 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 no, no, cause I'm not gonna get into the business of...
Baseball, softball.
Baseball, softball.
Pirate rec manages that very well, and I just don't wanna see the town trying to do something that they're already covering as for the area.
Have you met with that?
No, they're, they're gonna be a part of it.
They're really, really dedicated group of people, really great.
And so the, the individuals that are on our parks committee work with them very well and very close to them, so they're gonna help. Uh, gonna put a road committee back together, um, just three or four, and it's not for input, it's more of life cycle of things, what's getting done, how many feet are getting done, uh, as we go forward. That rolls into the next, which is the budget, uh, for town manager report, and road commissioner, I need to start showing how much we're spending for how many feet and how much is actually getting done. Cause Flanders Hill's almost done being ditched.
Looks good, I went out.
Uh, and it's still room for two cars, you know, it's actually a really nice job. So I need to let, show what we're, we're getting done for our money and what isn't getting done. Because we're starting to fall behind and we're gonna be into winter time and things aren't getting completed. And I'm afraid, and, and it's not so much the job being completed, it is, it is a safety thing for somebody traveling on those roads and getting hurt, uh, from winter.
Do you have any, any asphalt company lined up?
For...
Trench paving.
Trench paving, those, all those puddles on Silver's Mills?
Chris is gonna do the trench paving because he's called Pike and they're open.
Oh, okay.
So instead of...
How's it work?
Yeah.
I would comprehend that in my brain when you said that earlier.
Yeah, so that's...
Okay, no, that'll work.
I just need to make sure that those loads get down with hot coming into November.
Yep.
As it's eighty degrees today, so...
That won't last long.
Uh, and then the committees and, and, uh, the fire department, we're gonna start looking at the budget. Matt's already produced, uh, spreadsheet of all the equipment and the life cycle and where we're at with that life cycle, so we can stop looking at what needs to be programmed to be purchased for twenty-four, uh, because some of it is a liability issue, new tanks and new packs, things like that, so make sure we're up to standard with the D O L and, uh, going forward. So that's what he and I are working on is programing not just for twenty-four, but beyond twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, cause we've already, he and I already sat down and said, these ones need to be done now and twenty-four coming up, and these ones need to be done. And we can, we can get two more years or out of this life cycle, and that way firefighters are getting updated, new equipment, and then we're able to justify it to the taxpayer that these line items are in fact at their life cycle. Uh, also gonna be putting, probably, now the PAC committee's gonna be back together, we'll have that. Also, as part of a budget, and I gotta look to see how much we have for signs. I'd like to purchase an, an event sign so you can put down here by the town office on the corner, says next meeting, or this, or something. I gotta get prices, I know Sam has been doing a lot of work on looking at them, it's about a thousand dollars, but I need to see what I have and if we can, you know, take from Public Works in another area to put into that sign. And so probably next meeting I'll be asking if we can purchase one of those event signs.
Or if you need to ask, I mean, if you can line item in it, you've got the funds that's in a...
In the public works.
Or however you're gonna, you know, it's public work, so for me, I'm guessing, I know what you're saying, you wanna use it for events or whatever, but you could also use it for public works.
Right.
So it could be whatever, French's Mills got a culvert out, it's gonna be closed from here to there, or...
Right.
So as long as you're, you know, when you, that's kind of, if you think about that bigger picture, it's really is gonna be more of a, it's an everything sign, it's gonna be used for public safety, then why can't you take it out of the public works line item?
Right.
You know what I mean? Whereas if your thought process is, I'm gonna use it for office use only, and it's only about meetings, then really it needs to come out of something more office related, but...
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's, it's tailored to update so people know road work on this room.
Yep.
Or, you know...
And I don't see why you just can't take it out of, but...
Okay, all right, I'll look at that and then we'll go forward with it. I, in our reserve budget, I know there's, uh, some, some monetary amount in there, and I would like to start looking at investing some of that money, um, so that it will accrue, you know, passive income for us.
Yeah, we, we need a, we need an investment account, uh, you know, somebody like a Schwab or a Fidelity. The board needs to approve the type of purchase and the duration, but I totally agree with you. There's a lot of opportunity there, even, even six months, you can get north of five percent.
Right.
So that should be done, and I'm, I'm glad to help with that part of it when we get ready, but... And the board's never gonna, I, they'll always be guaranteed investments.
Sure, sure.
There won't be speculated on stocks or that sort of thing.
Well, we, we would, I think we would make more money than we would with the half percent we're getting in the bank account.
Correct, and you, you can manage it, we ladder the portfolio bonds so you know when they're coming due, and, and you can buy CDs as well, so it's...
And it doesn't have to be just the reserve account, I mean, we've got such an amount of money that's in general fund. As long as, if you think about it, your shortest, how do you word this properly? Your shortest income month is right before taxes start. So as long as, if you look at history, in those months, year after couple of years, whatever we had down that we, that's, the rest of it is free to go.
Yeah.
Cause other than that one or two month span, you've got plenty of money. Once that tax rule starts coming in again, then...
We should be able to generate forty, fifty grand a year.
That, that'd be perfect, yeah. It would be nice to be able to re, keep reinvesting that, so I, I'll start looking into it and I'll start doing some research portfolio, uh, so...
Good.
Uh, this is two thousand and twenty-four, not two thousand and twenty-five, but, uh, I'm used to working on the federal government fiscal year. Uh, gonna start programming the contracts now for mowing, uh, so we're gonna solicit for, for, uh, bid, for cemeteries, and then also gonna start looking into learning it, so we're on that cycle where we need to be before November, we've already got it committed by December, so that's where I'm on.
And roadside mowing?
Huh?
Roadside mowing? Roadside mowing?
Yes.
Okay.
That's gonna be one of them.
This is a topic every year for ever. The board has clearly said every single road in town that we maintain in any level needs to be roadside mowed.
Yeah, because if you go down to...
And if you look at the list, it's yet to happen.
If, if you travel down Grant Road right now, it, it needs to be mowed.
If you travel down Anderson right now, and you think there's a shoulder, when you go over the culvert, you're sadly mistaken because it never got mowed.
Yeah.
And the grass is this high, so... But Anderson didn't get mowed.
The bow launch.
Bow launch.
So the road committee that I'm putting together is gonna be in charge of mowing also to make sure that that's getting done and we're programming that, so...
But the biggest thing is you just have to take your road list when you put out your bid.
Yeah.
They know that, you know, even...
We have a list.
Jones Road never gets mowed, Norton Mills never gets mowed.
The highlighted roads were the ones that went out to bid, and some of them that should have been highlighted were not highlighted.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, it was really that simple.
All right.
I mean, the theory is if you at least keep it mowed down, the alters can grow up to those.
Right.
Even Norton Mills, we really don't do much down there for maintenance, but if we keep it cut back, at least it's helping it.
Uh, then the next is the, what is it, Unitarian Church over here? Just got registered on the main historic, uh, says a registered historic building. Uh, they're gonna send the certificate and everything, so there's your letter, here's my letter. Just says that they're, that they're, uh, they're registered now, so...
What does that officially mean for the town?
That we have another landmark?
But I mean, tax-wise, that doesn't change any, the tax rule, it doesn't change?
Oh, it won't change anything.
So it's more of just an acknowledgement?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, road commissioner, as I said, Flanders Road's almost done, and then Scott's gonna move over to Turn Road, and then, cause that's only gonna be a two-day job for him, then he's gonna move on to one of the others to, to continue ditching. And then we need Silver's Mills to be trench paved, but...
And French's Mills.
And French's Mills, Culver. And I plan on putting in here, like I said before, narrative that shows us what we're spending and what we're getting for our money, and then I'll put fire department calls on here.
And you, I know you and I talked about this, but I just wanted to get it on the record, you're getting a quote on cleaning up the mess that's behind the Public Works Building, so that, that'll be great.
So that's it for...
Yeah, and I'm not really sure why, hm, but that's been an ongoing, different contractors. It's, for the last few years, the thought process was that if they changed the culvert for the town, they could dispose of their culvert. To me, if we hire a contractor to do that, they should dispose of that.
Should be part of the package.
Right, I mean, it shouldn't just be the collect all that the town has to worry about cleaning that up.
We're gonna call scrap metal company and see if they wanna just come pick that up.
Cannaback Metal, my experience is about your only option for an actual scrap metal company that would come do that. Now, there's a bunch of junkies, or I call them junkies, whatever you guys wanna use it, that go around and collect scrap and haul it, you might get a local in here, but...
I'm just not sure if it's monetarily worth somebody traveling up here to load up just a few culverts.
I know, I know, uh, last year, no idea where, but Clint actually, he was crushing a bunch.
Right.
Flattened them out, and I know he had a trailer down there that was frayed, but...
Yeah, guys like him, I'm sure it's worth it.
Right, yeah, but I mean, I don't, but even then, like, he had to take the time and he had to crush it all out, and it's not like there's any money in the way to go that you can...
I think, I think all that metal, Dexter will take it.
We just gotta, there again, you're gonna pay somebody to do that.
Yeah, we're gonna, you pay somebody with a dump truck, you throw it all in the dump truck, and he takes it to Dexter, and I think...
Our scenario is, it either goes away for free or paid.
You might even make some money.
Yeah, I doubt you're gonna make money.
I doubt you're gonna make anything, but they're like...
But at least it would go away.
Yeah.
And you wouldn't expand, that would be nice.
I mean...
Tires are, tires are tires.
Tires are gonna, well, honestly, uh, Trash Buster's doing that trash. Automotive tires, they can take them. I don't know what's up there for tires.
But it is a lot.
Not as bad as the tire cane.
They can take a few of those a week.
There's also a big scrap pile of plastic from when the pile used to be covered, I mean, it's like...
Same deal.
Chest-high.
Yeah, that's been there forever, Trash Buster's has never taken it.
But again, I think that could go right to the recycling facility.
Right. Okay.
It's just a matter of someone putting it in a truck and...
Yeah.
Get it done.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Still have any concerns? Done here.
I'm quiet.
Um, uh, Friday, are you gonna try to attend with the engineer? It's one o'clock, did you say? I think you sent us some message.
Confirm it again.
Okay. I, I know if she's available, Jody would love to go.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know that she will be. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
It's four thirty-four, where's your?